Cause meeting order, please stand for the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to our motherland, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please turn off your cell phones. With that, Mr. Campbell, I think we're all set.
Okay, request to withdraw specific items from consensus items.
No, it's good.
I move that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum. A through L.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That was quick. Alright, moving on, I think at this point, we are gonna ask Mrs. Westfrosh if she had a take a few minutes and tell us how everything worked out with the plan for the GLP teaching position.
Hello, again. So today, we interviewed for the first grade teacher. I say we have me, other people, and we just would like to thank you again for helping us reach a conclusion, and I'd like to read the proposal that we put together, because I think that explains everything. The GLP teachers and Lauren Carter, principal, met on 11/21/12 to discuss the plan for using the funds designated to address the class size issue at the GLP. Group realizes that at this late date, a reassignment would not be the best option. The impact to students along with the ramifications to schedules, services, etc., would create a problem for larger than the benefits of the solution. The group does feel that a new classroom would have been the best option if it had happened much earlier in the school year. The request for additional information discussion surveys delayed the process much too late into the year. Taking all that into consideration, the GLP faculty in support of Mrs. Carter feel that hiring a grade one teacher who would be deployed into each of the first grade classrooms equally in a co-teach model would be the most beneficial model at this time. This teacher would provide direct instruction to students and decrease the student-teacher ratio on a daily basis. The group would like to post the position as, it's already been posted, the position as a grade one teacher, start the hiring process and recommend a successful candidate no later than the January Board of Ed meeting. For the future, the group requests that the Board of Education consider another grade K and grade two teacher moving into the 2013-2014 school year budget process to address the continual class size issues, so it does not result in a repeat of this situation. And we did discuss this at length with Mr. Burns, who came and talked to our staff one morning, and we thank him again for listening to us and helping us with the future of this.
How do you plan on deploying the teacher? What's the schedule roughly?
I don't know what the schedule will be. I'm not involved in that. That would be a question for Mrs. Carter. That teacher would work equally in every classroom, every first grade classroom.
Okay. Mrs. Carter here?
She's on her way there. Just finish the interview process.
Oh, okay, alright.
Just now.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, with that, is the opportunity for the public to comment to the board. Two-minute time limit, please identify yourself, your name, and any affiliation that you have. No takers tonight?
No.
Okay, yeah, must be the holiday spirit. Okay, well, we'll give Mrs. Carter a chance to take her coat off before we ask her any questions.
She's got two minutes.
Well, yeah, we'll come back to that. Okay, let's move on to new business.
Okay, appointments. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Thomas Priceall, be appointed on probation as a laborer effective December 11, 2012 through June 10, 2013. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level five, step one.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Appoint external auditor. I move that upon the recommendation of the audit committee, Drescher and Malachi LLP be appointed as the external auditor for the 2012-2013 school year.
Second. Discussion.
I'll have to abstain on this, because I know both the partners.
Yeah, you probably should.
Yes.
I have a question. I know when I was on the audit committee last year, Drescher and Malachi was not chosen, I thought, because they weren't going to be servicing us directly. Is that?
Because what?
Because they would not be able to service us directly, they would be using a subcontractor? Is that the case?
No, no. The other company came in at a lesser rate. We did experience some issues with them. The issues continued over this current audit. And Drescher and Malachi actually met the other firms' rates.
There was something, though, about a subcontractor, I do recall it now.
They were taking the Aerie County business or something, and so they weren't gonna be able to work with us directly?
No, Wayne said that Cole, who was here previously auditing us, would be the audit manager.
Okay, so we'll have them, okay. And the other thing that is a change, we had, Toski had a three-year deal with us?
Actually, when they bid, they've been on a five-year?
A five-year deal, and Lisa wasn't real happy with their performance, so what we did was we went back, the audit committee asked Lisa to go back to Drescher and Malachi and say, if he'll match their price, and they were a little bitter, and we'd liked their performance in the past, we would accept them, and they came back and matched everything, so that was good.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Teacher aide position. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a one-to-one teacher aide position be created effective December 11, 2012.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Change in hours. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, transportation hours be adjusted as follows. Kathy Funk, change from five hours to 4.75 hours, effective 11/7/12. Susan Pratt, change from eight hours to 6.5 hours, effective 11/14/12. And Cynthia Rankis, change from 4.75 hours to 6.25 hours, effective 11/19/12.
Second.
I have a question.
Discussion.
Why is there, is there always a change in the hours like this? Is this is common here?
As schedules change.
No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Two-way radios. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, six two-way radios, as per the attachment, be declared access and disposed of as the district needs necessary.
Second. Discussion. All in?
They cannot be narrow-banded. The FCC requires that all radios now be narrow-banded.
And what are we gonna do with them?
Actually, I have told, so they don't get in the wrong hands, they will drill holes through them, and they're no longer of use.
What's the concern about being in the wrong hands?
So people don't jam up frequencies. I'm not an expert in the two-way radio communication.
Basically, for fire and police and emergency crews and stuff, they require, the new federal guidelines and so forth were passed down after 9/11. If they couldn't be narrow-banded, they had to be either destroyed.
Really? Okay. Alright, interesting.
Are we buying new ones, or do we already have?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Budget increase. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2012-2013 budget be increased by $494.12 to $25,191,167.28 to account for increased revenues. The notation is that the district received $320.12 from the volleyball club for tournament security, and $174 from varsity club for officials.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mrs. Carter, we had one quick question. The new teacher that you're gonna be adding into the first grade, how is that teacher going to be deployed? Is it on a daily basis or weekly, or what's your thoughts on that?
First schedule will be divided among the four teachers, including on a daily basis.
On a daily, so they'll be in four or five hundred classrooms each day?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Is it gonna be the same time every day? Like, she could be in some type of routine, or is it gonna be flexible, or?
Probably based on the schedule, it may be flexible because of their schedule being flexible. Because on Monday, they may at nine o'clock be at FISED, but on Tuesday, they're not, so we're gonna try and have it so that it's most beneficial to their classroom schedule. It's usually gonna be when they have their best instructional block, we're gonna try and utilize it that way.
Okay.
So will they be supporting smaller groups? Is that for the breakup in small groups?
Yes.
Anything else? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Graff.
Seems like I was just here talking about scheduling when I looked at it in January, so.
Twice a month.
This one, a little, yeah, twice a month, one calendar year. But, you know, as you know, we've had an ongoing conversation about schedule modeling here at the University of New York High School. It's really been a conversation long before high time, and then we're gonna have to be honest with you. So I'm gonna go through what I found when I had, you know, there's nobody here tonight that this presentation might be made to my wife, she's so sick of these three-month schedules. So I'm gonna go through the information that I have, and then a little bit of questions for you guys. Okay, so. So I went through, and this is part of my wife is seeing me do, about twenty different studies on schedules. Grade word schedule, block schedules, hybrid schedules, modular schedules, there's all kinds of different schedule models out there. And these are the four biggest points that came out over and over and over again. First one was that the research really showed that there was no discernible difference in student achievement, regardless of what schedule model was used. And the biggest factor that they have coming back to over and over and over again was the fact that regardless of the schedule, if you have a strong teacher, that you're gonna have success within those classes. Next principle that kept coming up is the scheduling model has to reflect the school community's values, and that was just the reference to that one. There was a strong point that the educational partner incorporates, they are think tank for education. And it's actually a great resource, as I got into it a little more, there's all kinds of studies on, just about anything you can think of that has to do with education, in case you guys are ever looking for a place to go. They made a real strong point there, that you have to make sure that the schedule reflects the values and priorities. Again, most important factor that came out over and over, and I want to emphasize that, is the highly skilled committed teacher. And last one, use a model that fits that into your school. Those were the four major ones that kept coming out. Types of schedules, again, a block schedule that's what we currently use, four to five periods a day, generally speaking, classes meet every other day, seventy to ninety-minute periods, again, there's variations of that block, different number of rotation days, all those kinds of things.
The rotation and the minimum seventy minutes is what defines the block?
Yes, yes, it's the rotation where the block would be different at semester to trimester, because you would have that block of time for the classes to meet every day. And I think that's what Michael, Mr. Burns, you were at when you lived, correct? So in a semester, the schedule's the same block of time, but the course only meets for twenty weeks, and then you go into your next set of classes, similar to college schedule.
So what's the difference between semestering and block?
Block is the courses meet all year.
Okay.
Every other day. Semester, they meet every day for twenty weeks. And some states are into the trimesters, where it's fifteen weeks, and then they take a little break, and then another fifteen weeks, and then they take a break, and then another fifteen weeks. But that wouldn't really fit with our schedule here in New York State. Traditional schedule, which is what the majority of schools use, I think sixty-two percent, sixty-eight percent, so I can't remember the exact number. Generally speaking, the seven to nine period day, thirty-five to forty-five minute periods that meet daily. And then the hybrid or modular schedules, which are really a combination of longer and shorter periods of time, and again, based on what I looked at, thirty-five to sixty minutes, generally speaking, with a rotating schedule of days, some were four days, some were two days, some were six. There was one school that we ran across, or that I ran across, that was on an end day rotation. I wouldn't even wanna think how that works, but, so those are some of the different types of schedules that people are using. The pros and cons, and again, when I talk to people, and when I talk to the faculty about this, you know, this is just, again, the ones, the pros and cons that came up over and over again, you could have hundreds on either side. You really could have a list of hundreds on either side. So this is by no means the M-L-B-L list, the pros and cons, just some of the, again, the bigger things that kept coming out. Pros of the traditional schedule, it really was, parents know the schedule, because that's what they did when they were in school. Daily meeting times, increased instructional time. Thought there was increased instructional time being, and I'll get into it a little more down the road here. Because you're meeting every day for forty minutes, hundred eighty days, you get seventy to a hundred minutes of instructional time, generally speaking. And some of the block models do not allow for that, because of the time for, yeah, it showed that teachers could be scheduled more efficiently. Fitch Junior High model's better, and as we've had some discussions, there may be some tough reductions, some tough savings. Cons, and again, I couldn't see, the only reason why I put it up there is because it came up repeatedly. I couldn't figure out how it led to less opportunities for lack of, but, yeah, it doesn't make sense to me, but it was one of the things that did come up repeatedly.
We don't have any actual evidence, do we?
No, yeah, I mean, I can't, by matching up our schedule, plugging it in with three different models, we were, I was able to do what we're currently doing in all those models. That's just a belief of a lot of people. Less flexible instructional practices, right now, you have the opportunity to change things up two or three times during the period, where the traditional model, you know, not so much. Too many classes for a lot of kids. Some kids like having the four periods a day, as opposed to eight or a hundred different classes a day. More time in the hallway means more discipline, and we do have, actually, data in-house to put back that up with absolutely one hundred percent. Credit recovery, yeah, makes it a little more difficult, because in the block model, you have ways to get those kids repeating classes a little more easily than if they're meeting every single day.
You mean if they have repeated classes? You're saying it's harder in?
It's harder in this one year, one year, really. If they're locked into six or seven periods a day for the entire year, where when we're on their rotation, it does free them up for a segment, so much until a lot of somebody covers them. And of course, changes are painful. Pros and cons of block, and I threw in all different kinds of block models, semester, hybrids, modulators, these are things that came up. I can tell you, and I talked to somebody, I mentioned it at OCE's training this afternoon, just to verify this. This is my belief, and it was verified by the person I talked to at OCE. The Common Core learning standards are better suited for block models, because what they're looking for is more in-depth, more critical thinking skills that are better suited for a lot of the blocks. You know, that was the feeling I had, I did, I met by a couple people at OCE today to see if I was on the right track there, and they said, you're absolutely on the right track.
Who confirmed it? Was it a teacher, administrator?
It's an administrator.
And what was, what did they have to back it up with?
Well, just because they're experts in the Common Core, and they just know what the critical thinking and the in-depth manner of the Common Core. To have more time with a teacher in the class, to do those kinds of activities, felt absolutely makes sense.
What you said, the traditional model is actually a poor hands-on time.
Could. And that's, if you look over here, you know, you could get less, you could get less instructional time in a block if it's not used wisely. You know, if you have a teacher that's in a seventy-minute block, teaching for thirty and giving homework for forty, then that's not good. I don't see that happening here, but it could, it could be a detriment, for sure. Again, the multiple instructional practices, the in-depth learning we talked about, for just more group interaction, credits. One thing that came up in some of my conversations with faculty, they thought if we could get on some kind of schedule that would rotate the meeting times, where a kid didn't always have English in the morning, if they could somehow, if there was some kind of rotation where some days be in the afternoon, might be beneficial to some kids. Again, some of the cons are, with block, if you're missing one day, it's really the equivalent of missing two, so tough to recover from your own absences or teacher absences. Talk about the instructional time, lack of continuity, if you're, if you're in class on Thursday, and then you have a couple of snow days, and, you know, and you may not see your teacher again until Wednesday, then there's all different kinds of opportunities where there could be a lack of continuity. Lack of continuity, again, just not seeing kids every single day is also part of that.
Do you have a snow day when you come back in, do you resume this?
No, we resume this every, but there could be multiple days off. Again, in the semester models, you know, there's always that concern about time off between courses, especially math classes and foreign language classes. There were a couple Canadian studies that I looked at that did show a drop in achievement, although all the Canadian schools still run block schedules, even though they have that information, which I can't figure out. I thought that was interesting. Junior high teachers talked about, again, that gap in the meeting time for the junior high students, especially if there's a couple days off in between the Fridays and Mondays being off for holidays and things like that.
What's our junior high, seventh, eighth, and ninth?
The seventh.
Seventh.
And then again, change. How some of the others are scheduling, in the parentheses next to the district name is the ranking, based on the way we figure it out, and it's based on our model of calculation. And you can see pretty much everybody, pretty much everybody is on the traditional schedule. Airplay runs the modified or the hybrid, but the most, if not all, all of them is on block. Lancaster, Orchard Park, they're all on traditional. So, you know, again, sixty-eight percent of schools schedule on traditional, so that this isn't surprising.
Mark, can we go back one?
Yeah.
Are we saying that Clarence starts at 8:42? Is that new?
8:42 to 3:30, that's a big age.
So do they start their elementary schools?
They must start the elementary.
Well, there's some research that says that there's some benefits to that, I'm wondering
I was surprised by that, too.
Can you describe the Airboy schedule behind it? Because I don't share decision-making teams, I think, they, you have an example of that?
Yeah, I have an example, that's for sure. East Aurora, again, based on calculations in the number of school districts, they're on a traditional nine-period day, although I think that nine-period, they were thinking about cutting back on the four, and there's a sub-station.
Eight-period, eight longer periods? Seven.
So when they say nine periods, it's nine in one day, it's not?
Nine in one day, yeah, nine periods in one day.
Is lunch included in that period? Is lunch included in one of those periods?
Yes.
Okay.
Then I pulled some of the information I had from the private schools, about St. Mary's, Sacred Heart's, St. Joseph's, Holy Angels, they all show up at the top high schools, and again, they're all using traditional. Here's about St. Mary's, it got odd that one of the studies talked about the ten-day rotation, and here's the ten-day rotation about St. Mary's, which again, I can't even imagine trying to figure that out.
Can you explain the six-day rotation, when we have about five days a week?
It's based on a letter day, eight through half. It's not based on Monday through Friday, it's based on a letter day. Right now, we're on a four-day rotation, so using, you know, a two-week period, Monday's an A day, Tuesday is B, Wednesday is C, Thursday is D, Friday is A, and then it rotates. School and community input, shared decision-making, was in favor of block or hybrid block. Science, looking for a semester or a hybrid in high school, traditional for the junior high. Family consumer science and health, block, technology block, math, hybrid block, and so on and so forth. Music, looking for traditional, which I would have stopped that, because that fits better for what they're doing. Tough work getting to play for a lot of periods. Some of the, tough to, one of my professors talked this one, because I know that Steve had sent me, did some email and back and forth, and I was gonna take it out, and then when I talked to this person, they said, you probably wanna keep it in, just because you have a, you really have a microcosm of everything that you're thinking about within your own system. So he felt it was important to have it, or I think it is to show that with the Regents exams, the required ones, the comprehensive English, the global U.S. history, math, A, algebra, math one, or all of these there, just to see how we did in each scheduling model. So you can see how we fared in the traditional years. I went back to '92, because that coincided with the business first thing. So five years of traditional, fourteen years of semester, and then a couple years of block. It is, you know, the court would point out that back in those traditional years, the early part of those traditional years, not all kids took the Regents exam. They were scored differently. Those were the days of you truly needed a 65 to get the credit, you needed to know 65% of the material. Now we're on sliding scales, and, you know, all kinds of different ways of determining if kids pass or fail. So, you know, courses has changed, math, math day has gone from algebra, correct me if I'm wrong, this is fair, algebra to course one, to math day, back to algebra in this timeframe. So things have changed within those periods also. Again, that's how we've performed in the schedule.
So when you say eighty percent, in the traditional schedule, eighty-one point six percent of the students that took it, or eighty-one percent of our?
That was the passing, the passing rate.
Although it took?
Out of the kids that took. And again, looking at the different models, does that? And again, looking at the different models, does that, 81.6% correspond to 91.6%? That I cannot tell you 100%. You can't, because they're scored differently.
The state's admitted they've changed the bar for a lot of.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Mark, did you look at graduation rates? Because one of the pros listed for block was improved graduation rate.
We've got a pretty steady. I mean, it's usually no lower than 93%, somewhere between 93 and 96%.
And that's pretty consistent over all these years?
Across the board. Again, some of the comparisons in using those same exams, this was based on the last Regents exam scores. Again, just to, just to see and give an example, I wasn't able to go back 17 years to get that information because a lot of it's not there other than what we have of our own. So this was just an example, so you can see it. Really, I think this drives someone to the point that scheduling model doesn't matter that much. I mean, the block schools are down here. So these were the indexes that we talked about last month for each of these exams, where we ranked. Then I did the average index for all 28 school districts to get these numbers. This was the average index for the four schools that are on block out of the 28, and these were the indexes for the 24 that were in tradition.
For what year?
See, this is just based on last year's number, just last year. Yeah, I, I'm fairly confident to say that you're going to see basically the same pattern back. Business first, again, just, who knows how they figure it out, but just, you know, it's out there, so I figured I would throw it in. The traditional years, our average rank was 16.3. The semester years, 15.7. Block years, which is on last year and this year, 19.5. Our overall average rankings since '92 is 16.2. The median is 17. I went back to my algebra days here. The mode ranking is 18. I've had that four times. And our range, and our range actually fell within the traditional years. We had a high of five and a low of 34. My recommendation, again, taking everything, actually, actually, one more, would be to do some, some kind of hybrid scheduling, which would give us more contact time. And I think that's going to have to be, it has to be imperative. It has to be a factor that I think that will help me have more contact time. And to know that by continuing to do what we're doing, we have 450 less minutes of contact time per year for a full-credit course, I think that's just doing a complete disservice to the kids. I don't know if I can say it that strongly than that. If we can go to a model where we can get the maximum amount of time, we have to do it.
So that per course or per?
For a full-credit course right now, teachers get 6,750 minutes for the year. If we go to what I'm proposing, it'll be 7,200 minutes per year.
So if we're talking about 180, an average of 180 days a year, you're talking about like two and a half minutes more per day? I think that would have an impact?
Oh, I think over the course of time, I think absolutely. I mean, using, using the current model, if you equate it, you're looking at almost seven additional full instructional days over the course of the year. Could make, I think that could make a huge impact.
What determines from a state perspective, a full-credit, how do you determine that? Is it means that the students in the classroom?
Time.
Time? What is the, so what is the level that says?
I don't even know. Do you know what the time is anymore? What's that time? For, for credit. For one credit or one credit? 120, 120, 120 minutes. The recommendation, and again, you guys have heard me say this over and over, yeah, I hope you have, it's going to allow for some shorter and more AIS periods, which I think is one of the biggest missing pieces, is still not having that AIS up to snuff. We already talked about the Common Core, talked about faculty preference, shared decision-making preference, student preference. We would not need staff development time to allow teachers to adjust. Do end up going to traditional, there's going to be some adjustment time there that I think we would owe it to the staff to get. Would maintain current staffing levels, which in some areas, we believe, you know, I believe were low, and that's, again, that goes back to the AIS piece. Junior high specials, we're going to start scheduling on the 10-week blocks of time, which is more of a traditional junior high way of doing things. Junior high schedule, again, I go back to a story that our guidance secretary, this one would tell us when they brought in the scheduling guru years and years ago with all the shared staff. Guy ran out with his tail between his legs, could not, couldn't figure out a way to get the faculty on two separate schedules. We tried it a couple of years back, and the same, I can't figure out how to do it.
Okay, one schedule.
Everybody, yeah, everybody's on the same schedule. Again, there's presently a board-approved scheduling model, which is block scheduling, so it maintains that. And I don't think we want to lose track of the fact that, you know, we're going to have to be super tentative during the next seven months should, should that person have some same work we're doing. I, you know, again, I moved that up to you guys to hatch that up, but probably not a bad thing to fill all that fat out.
You stay here, student preference for block schedules? Did we survey the students?
I talked to students and not all of them, I didn't survey the whole student body. And that, a lot of the feeling, and you want to jump in with your preference, you know, if it's not what I'm saying, you feel free.
I think block, block schedule is an efficient schedule, especially with some of the upper level courses where you definitely need more time, especially in like, say, for example, chemistry or calculus. More time is definitely a lot better for us.
And again, part of, part of the feeling was we're running those half-days now once a month for staff development, and I can tell you that kids are terrified of the problems we're into the classes, just for that reason. Feels rushed, you know, when you have that, that extra length of time. It just allows them to feel more focused and comfortable in what they're doing.
How long are the classes, Mark? When do you do half-day?
Four, or two. I was able to talk to one of our neighbors, I know Kristen asked me, and I had already done it, but I do appreciate you reminding me. One of our neighbors who's making, they made the change from a block schedule to a traditional schedule, they're 15 weeks into it right now. You know, had a conversation with the principal as to why and all those kinds of things, and the bottom line from that person's perspective was as a new person to that district, new person to that position in the third year now, just felt that they needed a change for a variety of reasons. A lot of it had to do with MCT rates, which was one of the things in block. If you have high MCT rate, I would guess that you're going to see a corresponding drop. It was tough to make up. You know, there were some other things within their schedule, as far as passing time, I was surprised they had eight minutes of passing time between classes. So it was just, they didn't change it for, really, for any other, she told the flat-out, we really didn't change it for any other good reason than just to change it, because they felt they needed to mix it up. It was a fresh start. Too early to tell what the impact is. She says, other than the fact that the kids are crying for their 75 minutes back. Says she hears it every day. So here's my, again, just a real quick draft. By no means is this the NLP, I'll just an example, similar to the AirCoY model. It does give you eight scheduling spots, okay? There, there are some split, and again, I showed middle-of-the-day splits, they do some splits even in, in these early classes. I wanted to be able to make it all on one slide, but in this example, eight, eight separate scheduling places. The shorter periods in the middle of the day in my example, where you could put things like music and AIS, study halls, up to lunches.
Do we currently have study halls?
Yes.
And that's not to be confused with advisement?
Advisement, right. This gets rid of advisement, which I think, again, overwhelming feedback from faculty was that it's seen its time. Needs to go. Regardless, needs to go. So that's, you know, that's where I met, and again, I respect the fact that you guys are willing to look at it. I guess ultimately, you guys have the ability to change it the way you want to change it because of, you know, I, I don't know, you guys probably know better than me. With there being a board-approved model from the mid-'90s, I'm going to assume that you guys are going to have to act on something to change that, I don't know.
Be it six one-hour periods in here?
There would be six one-hour periods, and then the ability to split, split those things off. You know, again, these are just the fuel samples.
Six one-hour plus these smaller periods, you're saying?
Well, I mean, here's, you could go first, second, third, our one-hour periods, and then if, if you had lunch, say first lunch, you would go to lunch, and then you would go to a 35-minute period. If you had second lunch, you would go to class and then go to lunch. And if you didn't have first or second lunch, you'd be in class for an hour.
So this is moving closer to a traditional model?
This, this is the grand compromise. Because, again, I guess, most traditional schedules, somewhere between 39 and 45 minutes. Most block schedules, somewhere between 7 and 90. This gets us at 60. And I, I just keep thinking in my head that this gets us to a common time. It gets, I know I've been on staff for a while, but.
Is, is there still semestring, or are they taking the class throughout the year?
Throughout the year. And we have to figure out the rotation, you know, would we go on a six-day rotation? Would we go on a four? Would we go on a eight? Would we, you know, that, that's yet to be determined. But I think this gets, from my perspective, this gets me what I need, and I keep, I know I keep going back to AIS. It's, this would help.
Now, there are two concerns that I installed, the department brought them in their emails, and that was, one, that the math department said they should have math every day.
Right.
And they said, so the eighth graders should have the same class every day, but this schedule allows you to do that.
It depends on how it falls off. I don't know. That, that part, I didn't get that far into it.
Because those are two pretty important things. At least I took away from all the comments that I read, that those are two very important things. And the third part, to fit that together, was that you said, oh, well, these are going to save schedule.
Right.
Those two are so important, well, these are going to save schedule. Probably don't need that intersees before, to mark those needs.
So, you know, I don't want to put Mr. Ferguson on the spot, I mean, you were a block semester guy, and.
I liked it.
From a student perspective.
Is semester you in an option now?
We could go back for at least two years.
No, I mean, as far as Regents exams, we could do.
Oh, yeah. They locked it for two more, two more years past this year. So we could. High school level, but not as a junior high level. Right, the junior grade, for the Regents exams, yeah.
Mr. Graff, can you explain to me, clarify about the seventh and the ninth grade? Didn't you have trouble with their math? And I asked you, was it just that class? And you said, no, it's every seventh and ninth grade has.
Right.
Has had trouble. And what did you do, again, to?
I think it comes right back to this right here, the time on task. Having more time on task with those kids, more instructional time for those kids, that's, that's going to be a key, because I, and again, within our own district, I think we see that. I mean, we have sixth graders that get math 70 minutes a day. Seventy minutes a day, Mr. Graff, for math? But he's only three days.
About 75.
75 minutes a day. Yeah, every day.
May not be continuous.
It's not continued, 75. That's medium.
But still, 75 minutes of math instruction daily, as opposed to 75 every other day, they're really getting twice as much math. We see, again, I think this year, if we're not the top in sixth-grade math, we're pretty close, and then you see that drop. I, I think it's a direct correlation in common time. If we get that contact time up, it can't, it can't hurt us.
And what would you think if the, if we did switch, the little kids coming in earlier and the older kids coming in later?
There is research out there that shows that little kid brain starts earlier and the older kid brain starts later. Most every district, most every district does it just the way we're doing it in block, but has to do with childcare. You know, you need the older brother or sister at home to get the younger brother or sister off the block.
Oh.
On the other end.
Okay.
So I know there's, I'm waiting for your questions, Mr. Sibley.
Mr. Graff, do you remember why we switched into the, in the first place? Why, what was the big?
I mean, you, Mr. Graff said earlier to that, right? But I think, again, there's something people in the audience can answer that or not. I think ultimately, it had, it had a lot to do with trying to do something from a board perspective, from a district perspective at that time, student achievement, and also to regulate, correct me if I'm sounding a bit wrong, and advisement period that happened at the end of the day, that wasn't being used effectively. And research at that point, block semestring was, was, was very big. There were, there were, at that point, and I don't know the numbers today, but at that point, there were over 100 schools in the state that were using it. And, and we did see exactly what the research showed us, is that we saw an improvement in discipline, improvement in attendance, improvement in student achievement, and all of those, all of those peaked and then plateaued. We went, you know, five or six years, and they plateaued and didn't change much from there. But I also went, you know, and again, I think in Mark's model or recommendation, there's, we have to follow that with depth development pieces, because especially at the high school level, everyone has been teaching in a block schedule for 14 or 15 years, and, you know, they're going to spend 70 minutes, and very few would get in the 40-minute block, going back to that. A lot of those people don't have any experience at all in that, and are going to need some professional development in getting back to, you know, that, that shorter period of time, how to do that. That was one of the negatives or downfalls that we found, it came in 15 years ago, was that, you know, the model was put in place, and the board had agreed to that model, but it didn't complement the staff development, and no one was trained in how to teach. You know, they're all been teaching in 42 minutes or less, and now we're being asked to teach at 80 minutes, and there was no support for that at all for our teachers. So we're very hard, and it's first to try to get professional development. So I think if you're going, even going to the hybrid model, where it's going to be more 40-minute classes, we're going to have to make sure we include some staff development. The other thing, going back to our neighbor that changed, she did say there was a two-year process for that. Two years leading up to this year, so they're actually into the third year of, two years planning, one year of implementation, like the first year. This, again, I think we could make this, we could definitely make this kind of a half without much trouble.
So can, can you compare this to what we have now?
Well, right now, we have, on a given day, if we. Well, right now, we have, on a given day, if this was a given day, where you can see there's eight separate scheduling periods we currently have full. Because we cannot use advisement as a teaching period. So we have a five-period day, but advisement is a non-teaching period.
What about lunch and specials and...
Then it fits outside of those. Lunch is outside of the regular schedule.
All on periods?
75. Middle-of-the-day or evening?
But you're only showing four classes, unless I'm reading this wrong.
Right here. Yeah. You could have any combination of these eight, these periods here. So I'm showing some full periods, just as an example, and some split periods. So you could turn this into 10 periods and split another one. Split as many as we want.
Split into 30-minute periods?
Right. You know, or 25s or, you know, whatever, whatever fits the needs of what we need to offer.
It kind of offers you to put in such a short time period.
AIS is huge. 30 minutes or so, hard for, don't have it, get them in and out. Those are, 30, 35 minutes for that is...
What's the AIS?
The RTI, it's the...
It's RTI?
For the average, yeah. AIS and RTI, same. I used to call it AIS. I was brought up in the AIS age. I'm having a harder time calling it RTI.
And what about shop? Don't the shop teachers want the bigger hour and a half?
Yeah, and you could almost imagine, you know...
Would you be able to accommodate that at all?
Technology loves this.
Likes this?
Computer, anything with a larger block time, hours.
But this isn't a larger block time, is it?
Yes.
It's larger than traditional.
It's larger than a traditional. Less than, about 15, less than one.
And will their classes every day change? Like the traditional is 8:00 in the morning, I've got English every day, 8:00 in the morning, I've got English. So now would that change through the...
If you look at, and I can send it to you guys, I have the Euro voice stuff here. Copy it quickly if you guys want it before you leave. Theirs rotates where you don't eat at the same time every day.
What do you think about that?
I think it could be positive for some kids.
They confuse it with others.
It's like anything else. You're going to have your top 5%.
No problem.
It's not going to matter what's going to happen. Your bottom 5% is going to struggle on the 80 to 90% of the way. They're just going to go flop. You know, so you're worried about, I'm so worried about our RTI kids getting that one day.
How does the face time with them specifically change if you were to move to this model?
How, would you say that again?
As far as minutes, in terms of minutes, how does, how do kids that are eligible for AIS, how does the face time change versus what they have now?
I think it's, you know, again, using this example, here's a, I did a 35-minute block of time for AIS. Or using, as opposed to 75, where, you know, I think of some of our specialized, some of our specialized kids who could have a math class for 75 minutes, AIS for 75 minutes, and then go to resource and work on math. What it allows for us is to make classes smaller. So instead of classes 12 or 15 in AIS, which is conducive to, we're meeting a cutback. You can have half that.
So fewer minutes, but more focused.
Right, more small, more one-on-one attention.
But during that time, what are your top students doing?
They could, they're probably sitting in class over there.
Though, everybody class.
Or go into a study hall, which would take the place of their advisement, which everybody has right now.
Do you have the opportunity to add, so advanced classes? Advanced techniques or something of some sort? Skills that serve those grades?
Those are all, right, those are all.
Seems to give you a lot more flexibility.
That's, yeah.
How does the schedule work with, I know we have talked about adding more college-level courses. How does that work in a 60-minute model?
Uh, they won't. Because I'll go to the new step courses. They're teaching them at schools that are running traditional schedules and blocks. So they, they all care as long as you're meeting the time requirement.
And would you, something like chemistry, that traditional schedule would have a class in the lab separately?
The way your point does, I was looking at their stuff again before I came in. They actually give them, they're on a four-day rotation. They actually give them a fifth day. They do not schedule labs. So the teachers filter the lab in where it fits. So what happens is, right now, if you look at our scheduling board, we have, we have, say, one chemistry class and then two chemistry labs that correspond to that class. So what they do is they don't, they don't schedule any labs anymore. So by doing that, it allows those class sizes to be smaller. Because where there's labs is now another class. So now they have smaller class sizes, which keeps it conducive. They're running about 14 or 15 kids in each class. The teacher determines where the lab fits into where they're at within the...
The block of time, the lab where they want.
Yeah. And they do give them the extra day. You know, they give their AP courses, their honors courses, get an extra day. There was one course, I can't remember off the top of my head, actually gets every day.
When you say extra day, what do you mean?
A fifth day. They're on a four-day rotation, but they're giving some courses a fifth day. And one of their AP courses, they're actually getting meets every day for an hour the entire year.
Could you, could you lay out some examples of how are we filtering this? So we can maybe send it out to somebody that are a bit more...
I have the math that I filtered into, in your big packet. That's updated for the end. And one of the things is our current math schedule in a traditional schedule, this kind of schedule, and also what we're doing.
That's early on.
It's a six-day rotation.
It could be a cost thing.
Use the issue more. How the issue...
I can understand why your wife would be frustrated.
I think that happens, that's not, it's a lot of... Yeah, we want to try and fit some things in, see what it looks like. An actual example, and then, you know, I think probably maybe for, we can take some time and take a look at all the share we've gotten with the information today. And the next time we get to go to the block.
Again, I know that Steve and Chris and I had some conversations about this. You know, the only thing I would ask is if we're, whatever, whatever way you guys decide to go, it's going to be a major change. And again, I'll let Mrs. Karstet speak up from her perspective. It's, there's going to be tons of behind-the-scenes work, so the sooner we buy it, the ahead of the city. Because, you know, it's going to be really starting from scratch, from building a program all the way up to build, actually building the scheduling.
How important is it to you to have the new superintendent? Like in a schedule of 100?
My gut, I'm just going on my gut instinct, which I do a lot. I'm just thinking with a, with a big, a big decision, I think this is a big decision. It's a huge change in mindset and the way we're going to go about our business. I would think that person would appreciate it. I would just think if I was, if I was in that new person's chair, I would definitely not want to come in the middle of a potential or a scheduling issue. And I would want, I would want to have some input or at least be in the loop of it, be your wife at least.
Do you have any more questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, before I go into presentations, last month you'd asked me for some pricing. We talked about accessing a bus. And you asked about the cost of repairs. So bus 170 that they want access currently has 110,000 miles on it. It was purchased in 2002 for $34,000. It was fully appreciated after eight years. The estimated cost to repair. Option one, this is with painting the entire bus. If we don't paint the entire bus, they may not be able to match the paint. That cost is about $15,000. Option two, in addition to replacing the injector, injection pump, just partially painting the bus in areas that need to be painted. And that's about $12,000. Cost of a replacement bus is $40,000. Option one is 37% of a new bus. And option two is 29% of a new bus.
So how long do you think those buses will be?
Typically, our buses have been good for about 10 years. You know what, there's no guarantees. Once, once they get in, there may be additional problems.
It's from 2002, so it's eight years old.
No, it's 10 years old.
10 years old.
10 years old. Really depreciated after eight years.
And again, I guess I'm asking you, with your own personal vehicle, most of us don't keep our vehicles until they have 175,000 miles on it. And most of us wouldn't invest as much in repairs.
Buses are built differently, I can't make that comparison. Buses are built differently.
They are, but they also get used differently than your personal vehicle.
Does that forget, is this a plus size?
No. That's, I think, a 16 to 20 passenger bus.
Do we get, do we, when, do we get percentage?
We get aided in.
Get aided in, how much?
Um, approximately 73%.
So, so really, that cost of a replacement bus, is it, is that the cost of it after the aid?
No.
That's before?
It's before the aid.
So there'd be aid on top before you go down?
We would be aided over five years.
Is any of the fair work aided, capable?
It is. But we have, we have, I think, $1,200 to $1,400 left in a repair line for this, in this year's budget. I don't have $10,000 to $20,000 in the repair budget.
Well, we've got $40,000 buying a bus in the current budget either.
Well, again, this is for planning for next year, for the future.
So the same thing about repair, right? Is this bus currently in service?
No, it won't pass DOT inspection. And if it doesn't pass inspection, we can't use it.
So we're using CPOs? How many of these buses we have? Is this all buses, are there short buses?
Um, I think we only have maybe three.
We don't love them this last time.
Correct.
They're going for budgeting, so we don't really need to notice till we get to budgeting time anyways, right?
Right. Right, but this is what you asked before the cost to repair.
So the letter only said the injection pump, it didn't say quite.
So it's out of service right now, so how are we getting by?
We have spare buses.
So the last question was to surplus it. But why do we have to buy a new one, I'm saying? We don't. They were just trying to surplus it last time and we were looking at the cost of replacing.
Right, by surplusing it, we're not carrying insurance on it.
Are we carrying insurance on it now?
Yes, we are.
We have to, even though we can't drive it?
I can look to see whether we have to, but if it gets damaged by students, it really should be insured.
Well, but you have, so you have a cost replacement bus there. Was your intent to put up a replacement bus for the next budget then?
Not necessarily, you know, not a 20-passenger bus. I just wanted to show you a comparison. The price of repairing the bus as opposed to the cost of a new vehicle.
So by accessing this, we're not, we're not making a commitment to buy another bus actually?
Correct.
No, we're not. Just worried that at some point this can come up in the budget process anyways. And we're going to need a bus, so we're going to hear the bus on that list.
Either that or we're going to have to budget hefty dollars for repairs. You know, if we don't begin replacing some of these buses.
When you say we do get aided on repair, how much is that, the same percentage?
Same percentage.
Okay, so, I mean, at the $14,000, we would be aided 73% or 72% of that repair cost.
I'm okay with waiting a little longer until we get in the budget process. I want to do, unless, we should just put it in our budget.
You fine?
Keep this in the budget.
Lucinda?
Thank you.
I can't get this to, I'm doing a little function of aid. Thank you. Okay, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the fiscal cliff and how it will potentially impact us. Okay, the fiscal cliff is the January 1 deadline for Congress to compromise on taxes and spending. It also signifies the expiration of both payroll tax cuts and Bush-era tax cuts. If no compromise is reached, sequestration will take effect. This is mandatory spending cuts. The impact of sequestration, our Title I, which is ELA and reading. Currently, that funds 1.82 full-time equivalent teaching positions. And the amount of our grant is $143,000. Our Title II grant, which is for staff development, funds .96 FTE teachers. And that's approximately $55,000. Section 611 does not fund any staff, but that's for preschool, special education, which we have to provide certain services. Section 611 is school-age special education. We have 2.9 teachers and counselors out of this grant and three teacher aides for $295,000. Our universal pre-K grant, that's 1.5 teachers and 1.5 for teacher aides, about $135,000. So there's a potential that we can lose almost $642,000 in federal funding. It translates to 7.18 full-time equivalent teaching positions and 4.54 full-time support staff positions. I checked with Questor BOCs, that's our state aid planning unit. And they relayed to me that they understand the grants for 2012, '13 will be fully funded. But if sequestration occurs, they may be reduced or eliminated for, well, 2013, '14. They also let me know that federal aid for our school lunch and Medicaid program will not be impacted. Okay, if the funding cliff is reached and we don't receive any grants in 2013, '14, you get the following options. You can eliminate all programs funded with federal dollars, but we still need to provide the mandated services required by New York State.
Is the federal funding covering New York State mandate?
That's what I've been told. With the special and the Title I. You can add all staff supplies back to general fund. This would increase the budget by the last grant funding of $642,000. This translates to a 2.5% increase over our current year budget. You can eliminate the federal fund... You can eliminate the federal fund staffing while getting the general fund pick up some level of staffing. And again, provide the mandated services, special ed, AIS, RTI, and that's with our Title I grant. Okay, if the general fund supports the Title I and special ed funding, we would increase the budget by about $452,000. It's a 1.8% increase over current year budget. So I guess we all have to keep our fingers crossed. Okay, and then I'm going to share with you some revenue and expenditure projections. You've seen this before. The estimated column is our current year budget 2012-13. The deficit of $619,000 that was funded by the appropriated fund balance, which reduced the TX levy for the current year. 2013-14 and add, the revenue projections are pretty similar to previous projections I shared with you. I did add some additional funding for special ed tuition we received. So that increased the revenue a little bit.
Well, the real property tax increase is at 2%?
2%.
Any other increases there? Anything else that's pretty flat?
Pretty flat. Other, that's about a 1% increase each year. There's about a 1% reduction. You know, again, I don't know where we're going to be. Personal services, I did some quick down and dirty projections for 13-14. Instructional salaries are about $9.9 million, and non-instructional salaries about $3.2 million. The equipment and capital outlay, I budgeted money for a truck. We have one truck that's pretty old, that could use to be replaced, and a scoreboard. Contractual and other, I think we increased that.
So the scoreboard is under equipment and capital outlay?
That's right, yeah.
And you budgeted how much, 18?
No. I'll look under 2013-14. I have the blue column highlighted in under 14.
Okay, 75?
Well, for both the vehicle and the scoreboard. And again, just ballpark estimates. These numbers will change.
The pickup truck?
Yeah.
Do we sell the dump truck? Trade it in? Since we don't use that.
Love to. Our contractual and other were increasing by about 1%. And again, I don't have numbers in the budget, so I don't have anything good for you at this time, just projections. Employee benefits, that I did update based on the projected salaries. The ERS, employee retirement system, the rate is 20.9%.
ERS is 20%?
20.9%. And that's for non-instructional. And teachers' retirement is 16.5%.
For 14?
For 13-14.
And there are increases by almost $1 million over the past, $1 million?
Right. I've also just plugged in a 10% increase to health insurance.
Year-over-year 10%?
At this point?
No.
It's, I think, reasonable. Last year, we hit a very low increase.
Yeah, I think it's
So again, at this time with these preliminary numbers, we're showing a almost $2 million deficit. I'm showing we're going to use appropriated fund balance, unemployment insurance reserve, the retirement contribution reserve, and reserve for employee benefits. That's about 30% of our reserves and fund balance. I know you went at 30 in year one, 30 in year two, 20 in the 20, and that's how I budgeted for these fund balances and reserves. So having said that, using that approximate 30%, we're still showing a deficit of $508 million. Sorry about that. $507,000.
It doesn't take into account the fiscal present?
No. That is correct. This is in addition to.
So you took the remaining fund, remaining reserves, and did 30-30-20-20 for those last, this four years? So you actually stretched it out further than what we had actually talked about last year?
Right.
It was 30-30-20-20, but the first 30 was in this current year.
That's correct.
So you took the remaining, kept that consideration?
Someone again, need to, 2014-15 through 16-17, the deficit, unfunded deficit gets worse. Goes from $507,000 to $876, to $2 million, and then to almost $3 million.
We're right in line with projections that the SuperTAN survey, I'm not sure, Mr. Bugs, how you filled it out, but I'm sure you probably picked 2016 as the year we really can't handle it anymore by any means.
Right.
You had to guess what you put on the chart. So we're right in line with just what everybody else.
The article, you're talking about the article they had in the paper, about two to four years, most school districts will be insolvent.
Yeah. So it looks like 16 will be our year.
We also look at, the most recent information we have in regards to state aid is that it fastest will be flat. Their State of State Department is estimating right now that we, Ross, down about $35,000 down, which is really flat. And that's the estimate, and they were, they were pretty close to being on last year in that projection. They're required by law as of November to do a projection. But they were right on last year.
And I know you probably can't read this too well. Here are our reserves and fund balance, and it's just showing how they're used year by year by year. In 2017, the only reserves we will have is reserves that can't be spent. Capital reserve, repair reserve, reserve for encumbrance, and are prepaid. Those are already accounted for or need to be spent by, you know, for specific purposes.
Is there any vehicle to move those back in somehow, ever, to either eliminate them reserve or anything else, or turn that money back?
Capital reserve, the voters did approve that, so I think we would need to contact legal. The repair reserve, we could probably use that to fund specific repairs. I don't know if voter approval, off the top of my head, I don't remember a voter approval requirement.
You should get a chance to probably look in there and see if there's a way to.
Yeah, we just need to be careful with that, Stephen, that keep in mind that the capital we can use for, not for things, and certainly we're going to have things that may end up approved, that are not, if they're on the budget, then they need building repairs and that kind of stuff. Could go under capital. Could be done under that capital line.
But if there was a building repair, it still had to be in the budget, still had that budget.
No, but it can be, you can do a private. You can do a small private, but it's not big, you know. A million dollars, and you have, you know, half of that already in the bank. That kind of thing. Same thing with repairs, if we started that repair reserve, and the agency reduced that because ultimately it was there in case anything major happened to their project line. And we have to figure out what we're going to call it.
And here's just a graphical representation of the current, you know, the actual revenues and projected. As you can see, we're pretty flat from 12-13 to 16-17.
Scales.
Yeah. And here are expenditures.
Not so flat.
That's good.
And here's the combined revenue and expenditure projections. As you can see, for current year, the $619,000, that was unfunded by appropriated fund balance, go to the $2 million, $2.3 million, $3.9 million deficit. And then I'm just showing you, you know, another representation, how we're using fund balance and reserves for each of these years. And that's the unfunded amount of the deficit.
The operating deficit.
So, any questions?
This is, this is at even the tax cap at this point?
At 2%.
And that's what ours is? I know some of them fluctuate.
They all fluctuate. Again, this board chose to keep it at 2%, which I don't think is a bad idea. Everybody thinks it's 2%, and if your tax bill increases by 5% or 10% because we're still within the limit, you know, they're going to question probably not trust. And once we hit the
Actually, that goes with 2.7 to 28, something like that.
I have to check.
Somewhere in that ballpark.
Why would it show like more than that?
Well, there's things you can include to your TX cap, and you can exclude certain things. So it's going to, you know, make your maximum allowable TX cap even more or less than 2%.
So some people, it's going to look higher, and some of it will look lower. Give me an example of something that's going to be included.
You can include as a deduction to the TX cap, increases in ERS and TRS rate that are more than 2%. And New York State provides us that information.
What's ERS?
Employee retirement system. TRS is teacher retirement.
It varies by every district. I think Holland, Holland's actual number that they can go to is 0.7% or something like that. So the way their map worked out, they had really low numbers, they actually had no override on theirs to have no funds offered. So it varies a lot. Ours is just a slightly above 2%.
Right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
The only thing, the only thing that I have, just I wanted to clarify that, Steve, you asked a question about number of minutes per week. It's actually 180 per week, and 120 per week.
To get full credit?
And that's really all that I have. Everything else was incorporated in the other two presentations.
Okay. Anybody have anything they'd like to talk about? No?
Yes, I'd like to know, there was a, there was a, we hear Mr. Bugs sent out, I think that this is a pretty serious, I think this is a pretty serious issue with the finances. It looks pretty severe, Lisa. Thank you for your, for presenting that. And what can we do as a community? When we went to the, when we went to the school board meeting, and we talked to, some of the people had talked to us, is we're really kicking the can down to the politicians. And my question here at the board is, can we, can we give our community those tools to write, can we send that out to them? The tools that they can write to the, who do they write to? What can they write? And forward that email that Mr. Bugs had forwarded about
Sure. We can, we usually do that in any places anyway, as we get into the budget time, about, I usually talk about communicating with your legislators, assembly, senators.
I think maybe if we went a little bit further, and I don't know what you've done in the past, Mr. Bugs, but I think it's really important this year that the community knows.
Well, the community does get that information every year, as far as who to write to and what the situation is. So, I mean, we'll certainly repeat that and get them as much information as we can. I would encourage the board to respond to surveys and, you know, automatic contacts that you get, and kind of send those out. I know you all get those too, from school boards, is to, when there's a call to action, for example, is to respond.
Anything else, Barb?
I'll just make one comment to the public and everyone. We see what kind of hole we have this year. Last year, for the most part, we closed that gap, most of it, without making any operational changes, if you will. There was money that was surplus in the budget, and we tightened a lot of numbers up based on history, and we got away with it last year. We're not going to be able to do that this year. So as we get into budget season, I'd like to have a little different tone this year and have more of, if folks want to come, give us suggestions and reasons and ways that we can try and do something different to try and get through this, that's great. If it's people lining up to save their favorite program, well, you can see the numbers, it doesn't matter what your program is, everything's going to have to be looked at, looked at hard to get through this. So we need ways to try and do things differently, change the way we're doing things. For example, when we met with the, some of the parents Barb and I did last week about the music scheduling in the elementary building, we talked about, a perfect example is, that's like all other areas, funding's going to be tight. They may want to start looking at ways to have the equivalent of sports booster club in the music areas, ways to help kind of carry some of those programs forward in such tight times. So I'm not saying that's the right solution, but it's a solution to look at. So I'm asking everyone start thinking about things we can try and do to be proactive and work together to try and get through this kind of stuff, because it's not going to be easy. So, any other thoughts or comments? Anything else? Okay. I make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks for coming.